I'd like to call the Board of Ed meeting to order. If you'd like to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank you all for coming. I'm so happy you're so interested in our budget. That said, anybody who would like to speak, we're going to ask you, for the sake of SCTV, to please go up to the podium. Remember to state your name and your address. If there's any non-residents in the room, we would ask that you would wait until all our residents have had a chance to go first. And with that, feel free to form a line or however you'd...
Our addresses have to be public?
Pardon?
Or ours would have to be made public on the speaker or can we give it later?
Give it later.
If you could just make sure you write it down. If you have written comments, if you want to write it right on your comments and you can turn those into us, that would be fine. Okay?
Can I just quickly frame a couple of things before we start?
Sure.
Okay, so appreciate everybody coming out. I just wanted to, before we get started, frame a couple of things relative to what my understanding is for process, where this kind of sits right now. Because the press conference hit yesterday. Nobody knew it was coming, which was interesting. But that came out at 4 o'clock, so I had an opportunity to attend a superintendent's meeting today and get a little bit of clarity on what some of the next steps are. So the governor has clearly made his recommendation that the mask mandate be dropped. He's asking the legislature to codify that ruling along with several other of the executive orders. They are going into session, legislature's going into session on Thursday. The State Department of Education, the Department of Public Health have both made, not written statements yet, but have made comments in public that they support that direction and the governor's wish. The State Department of Public Health really hit on kind of four, I guess, data points or four things that they're thinking about that have changed their decision-making at this point. One is to really look at a community's vaccination rates. Another, recognizing the quick slope we've seen downward in hospitalizations as well as positivity. And then the recognition that we're dealing with a milder variant than we had in the past. So that was kind of the basis of what the Director of Public Health had said yesterday. So what I wanted to do is just kind of, clearly I haven't had an opportunity to talk to my board either, but just reiterate how we've made decisions from the onset of this pandemic a couple of years ago, that we've done it in collaboration with the Department of Education, with the State Department of Public Health, and then in consult with the Farmington Valley Health District. So in terms of, there's no recommended action tonight because we have not seen anything in writing and we need an opportunity to review with that and certainly get with Farmington Valley. But what I would recommend to our board is that we don't deter from the decision-making process that we've had in place for two years. And clearly that a couple of those bodies have already suggested that they support moving away from the mandate. So we are looking forward to the input that we hear tonight. I've received many, many emails over the course of the last 24 hours. So I've actually printed all those off to share with my board as well, because I think it's important that they know the information that's come in. And we would ask for a little bit of patience over the course of the next couple of weeks while Department of Public Health puts together whatever this official ruling or official word is going to look like, so then we can kind of communicate next steps from there. But certainly appreciate the interest and thank you for all coming out and I've talked enough.
So just a reminder again, you're free to go to the podium, make your comments, state your name at least, provide us with your address before you leave, and you have three minutes each. With that, public audience is open. Just watch the cords up there, Mike.
All right. Is this on? First of all, thanks to the board. Superintendent, everyone, realize that, you know, with the executive orders...
Mike, can you state your name first? Sorry.
Mike Park, Simsbury, all the way. Realize your hands have been a bit tied and it's untied, so it's exciting. So everyone gets to say what they feel about this and what they believe. First of all, I'm going to read my son. I asked him to put into words how he feels about masks. He's a student at Henry James. And he said, "I do not like masks because I cannot see other people's faces. I have trouble wearing them. I've gotten several detentions for them being below my nose. They are very annoying. Also, when it's very hot and I play sports, I have trouble breathing. I miss people's faces. And it's also kind of sad. Me and my friends have gotten kind of used to it. And we are sick of it. And that's why we should have them removed from school." So as a parent, and I've coached many teams, I was volunteer on the Simsbury High School, Middle School Ski Bus, on a coach bus with 50 kids and chaperoning them. A lot of fun. Baseball coach right now, Simsbury Baseball. The three things that I ask for is please to make masks optional for students, teachers, and staff. If people want, if they want to wear them, allow them. If they don't, they shouldn't be forced to. Choice. Second, do not treat kids differently due to vax status. Kids are extremely low risk. Plus, many have gotten COVID, including my son, myself, and my wife around Christmas. It was mild. Which is part of the puzzle. Many countries do not mandate vax for kids. And the WHO does not, World Health Organization does not even recommend vaccine for anyone under 18, except those at high risk at this time. The risk reward just does not make sense. In Connecticut, there have been two deaths under nine, seven under 19, and while tragic for any child or young adult to perish, COVID is less risky than about half a dozen causes of death, including drowning and cancer. If we spent a quarter of the time educating unvaccinators who are 75% of the COVID deaths, we would have saved many lives. Again, more choices. Please stop the testing. Cases are not the metrics as Omicron has shown. If you're sick, stay at home. It's really that simple. Bottom line, we're about two years into this. Everyone in Simsbury's school system has a chance of vax or not. Get healthier or move. It is way past time to get back to normal. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? I can't see behind the wall.
Sorry, if you're over here.
Oh, I'm there. Well, I'll try to line up.
It might be easier because of the floor. Did you line up on the other side? If you would do that, just so I don't worry about you all tripping.
Hey, Tara Lee's done. I'll write my address down. And this is Celia who's done. Celia will be finishing off what her mommy's going to say. I'm coming to you tonight as a teacher. Became a teacher because I love kids. I'm coming to you as a mom. I became a mom because I love kids. Celia's just one of four. And I'm coming to you tonight, just like you are all here, because we love kids. So I just ask that we just have a clear mind and we just think about the different perspectives: teacher, mom, kids. So today I taught in a first grade classroom. I had my mask on all day. When I'm finished my day, wearing my mask all day, trying to talk with a level-three voice, which is this projection, so all the kids can hear me, I end the day with a headache. And that doesn't happen normally with me. I never get a headache, to be completely honest with you. It's just from the mask. I want to be able to hear students again. I'm a lip reader and I can't really hear students. And so think about what that means for the quiet kids or the introverted kids. That's hard. I want to create an inclusive classroom community where all kids feel equally heard. That's really hard with masks. I want to be able to see their feelings. I want to be able to see how they feel. Nonverbal cues for kids are critical, especially the kids who are quiet. I want to be able to read their lips, as I said, because I have a hard time hearing. As a parent, I want to send my kids to school knowing that they're going to develop the critical interpersonal communication and social skills that they need in order to be collaborators in growing up and out of school. I don't know that they're going to be able to do that if they're afraid of taking their masks down and reading each other's facial expressions. I want to be able to send my kids to school knowing that they feel good throughout the day. My husband gets my kid off the bus every day and he said she doesn't look well. I don't like that as a mom. I don't like that feeling. I want to be able to wake up in the morning and not worry about where the clean masks are. I want to be able to make sure she has enough masks. I want to make sure that throughout the day, her mask isn't getting dirty. I want support when I'm telling my own kids to be careful, to be safe, but also, don't be scared, honey. We don't need to be. We just need to be careful. Also, I have a high schooler. Think about the introverted high schooler. These high schoolers are going to graduate in two, some of them two, three years, some of them next year. Think about the high schooler that has this on their face over the past few years. What communication skills have they developed? They've been asked to sit three feet or six feet apart. Think about it from the kid's perspective. Now your time. What do you want to ask them?
Please let me take my mask off.
And that's all.
Hello. Megan Pugliese. I'm at 181 Hoskins Road. I'm also speaking on behalf of the Ogles, 24 Alder, the O'Briens, 142, sorry, 462 Hot Fire Town, and the Callahans, 15 Hallview Drive. I'm speaking on behalf of my family and my sisters and mother. Between us, we have eight children currently attending squadron line. Now that masking has been made a district choice, we are requesting that our district revert to the reopening plan developed and shared last June, making masks a family decision. I am currently treating one of my children for a rash on his face from wearing masks. My children have cooperated in school and we have reiterated that masks are a requirement that those at the school do not have any choice in the matter, any more than we do as parents. They have worn them for an academic year and a half. They share privately how much they hate them, how uncomfortable they are, how hard to breathe, they smell gross. They basically get no mask breaks at all, but they have gone to school and worn their masks. We have preschoolers who are learning to speak and connect, with masks inhibiting their academic and social-emotional learning. We have first graders, three of them among us. Our first graders have never been to school without a mask. They have had to learn to read without seeing their teachers' mouths. They have never had a normal school day. There are speech delays that have been exacerbated and missed due to masking. They have learned to hide behind a mask and find comfort there, which has impacted personality. We have older elementary children, fifth and third grade. They are old enough to understand the requirements and who is sending them. They are old enough to have opinions and feel the implied blame of making them mask. As one of our children said, "Well, we certainly unmasked our grown-ups" when they realized that the only time we parents ever are required to mask is when we are in their school. We have seen the serious behavioral issues that have exploded for older children who now have missed two entire years of social-emotional learning and development, thanks to many of the mitigation strategies and masking in particular. The disrespect, the violence, the bullying. I am not sure how 10-year-old children are expected to know how to read social cues and interact in a healthy way when they have not seen their peers or teachers' faces since they were eight. The change proposed by Governor Lamont yesterday fell short by not giving this choice directly to families to make. It is time that the ultimate authority on the well-being of our children be returned to their families. No one, not the governor, the legislature, those of you sitting here in front of me, the Health Department, knows better than parents and guardians what is best for our own children. Thank you.
My name is Henry Pugliese. My name is Henry Pugliese. I live at 181 Hoskins Road. I think the masks are bad because it's hard to bond with other kids in my grade. And I have three siblings who, and we haven't been able to mature the past two years. I think that the masks should be a choice in schools and not a requirement.
You could take the mask off to speak, right? Good, okay. Good evening, everybody. I'm Stacy Walzak. I'm at 35 Banks Road in Simsbury. And I'm a mom of two little ones that actually aren't school-aged yet, but I really, really, really worry about them because one is developmentally delayed and she'll be three soon and she'll be required to wear a mask. And there's kind of no way around that right now. My husband is also a teacher at HJMS. So we spend countless evenings, sometimes in tears, around this subject, to be honest with you. But in any case, I'm here to encourage you all to make masking an individual choice when the decision comes down to the local level. These masks were never meant to be on our faces long-term and the data doesn't support the mandate anymore. Our vaccines are effective. I mean, our whole family got it. The kids thankfully had mild cases. My husband and I wouldn't have even known COVID if we had like a 24-hour flu. So that makes me feel good about the vaccines. I hope everybody else is as lucky. But in any case, they're effective against severe illness. And they're readily available, right? Like five and up can get it like in a second if they want to. They just got to take a drive. And in addition, our state has one of the highest vaccination rates. So we should all feel pretty good right now. So I guess my question is, if we don't take them off now, when are we going to take them off? In three years? Four years? Five years? How much damage is going to be done in that time? I commonly hear that children are resilient and they're just happy to be at school with their friends, but I just, to me, that's just not good enough. As adults, we tell our children what is right and wrong and they believe us. They entrust in us to make those decisions for them. And I really believe a continuation of this policy would be detrimental to the mental health of our children, let alone the employees of schools, but let's focus on the children. And we've instilled a generation of fear and we've, I think inadvertently caused harm and record levels of anxiety, depression. We have loss of human connection through masking. And we're asking our children to pay such a high price when they're truly the least at risk. And it's just destroying families, honestly. So I don't, I think we should continue the daily health assessments and allow our fully capable, intelligent Simsbury families to decide on what they want to do for daily masking. Okay? And I think it's time to start the healing process. And I think it's, we got to do it through human connection. We got to take these things down. We got to smile. And any additional masking is just going to hinder that process. So let's share some smiles. Let's hug again. Like, come on. That's it. Thank you.
My name is Miki Copel. I live at 9 Pinecrest Drive in Simsbury. I wanted to start by saying, did you know that a child is more likely to die swimming than they are of COVID? Yet the pool is packed every summer. Kids run and jump into lakes and they body ride into the waves of the ocean. What are we doing to our kids? Why are we creating so much fear and anxiety? Why are we sending them the message that if they don't wear their mask properly, they may kill their teacher or grandma or papa? This has to stop. Our children are only children for a small amount of time. Let our kids be kids again. They don't get these years back. Can we take a minute to follow the science? Masks are not effective. Johns Hopkins Medical Center conducted 24 studies in several countries and several states across the United States. And every single study showed masks did not make a difference in the number of cases or deaths. We are learning that masks contain harmful bacteria. We are seeing that they are causing a strain on our children's mental health. Be honest with yourself. When is the last time you went to a school and you saw a group of kids lined up in the hall? And not one is even wearing their mask properly. They play at recess without them. They eat lunch without them. They have sleepovers without them. They go skiing without them. This is not logical. This is not making sense anymore. Why are we so hyper-focused on a population that is at minimal risk? Lamont helped Connecticut move in the right direction. He gave more power back to the people. But ultimately, the decision of my child's physical and mental health stopped here with you at the Board of Ed. It does not belong here. I know that as much as I want my mask off my child, that there's a mom who wants it on. Give the power back to the parents. Health decisions are a family matter. There is no blanket solution for COVID. Our grandkids are going to get COVID. This is not going anywhere. We need to normalize life again. When you decide to make masks opt, I would just like the respect to finish. I'm almost done. When you decide to make masks optional, please don't make it only for those who are vaccinated. Why is it justified for one mom to say, "I want to vaccinate my child because I don't know the long-term effects of COVID"? However, if another mom says, "I don't want to vaccinate my child because I don't know the long-term effects of a vaccine", it's not justified. Life is fragile. It is a gift. The sick and vulnerable could die from the common cold, the flu, an infection, and now COVID. It's a scary conversation, but it is an honest one. I personally understand this. My brother was diagnosed with a brain tumor at the age of five. And at the age of seven, he died. Ultimately, what took his life was pneumonia. Had he have died today, he would have been a COVID statistic. Please, I am asking the school board to do the right thing. Let families make their own decisions. I leave you with this thought. If we can't control what goes on and in our children's bodies or our own personal bodies, are we truly even free? Please, do the right decision. We're all tired. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Helen Saman. I'm at 1 West Mary Drive in Simsbury. I'm a mom of five young children, three of which are in elementary school, one's in preschool and a baby. So yesterday, Governor Lamont put masking in the hands of our local leaders, health departments, and school boards. And it is my hope that Simsbury will continue what Superintendent Curtis said in June, which was that he would allow masking to be optional for our kids. I also hope that all of the restrictions at school regarding distancing will be lifted, allowing kids to get back to being kids. Childhood is so short and now every single kid in this town has had at least 10% of their childhood ripped from them due to the policies that are unfairly restricting them, despite them by far having the least amount of risk. But not only do their young ages have the least amount of risk for complications from COVID, but they are at the ages for the highest risk of things, of diseases, like depression, anxiety, suicidal ideation, addictions, et cetera. My elementary-age, school-aged children don't even want to go to lunch anymore because they get in trouble if they don't pull up their masks in between bites. My third grader told me that he would rather stay in his classroom and do homework during lunch so that he can have more time to play unmasked after school in our home, so that's what he does. At the beginning of the school year, my kindergartner was scared to take off her mask in our own home because she was afraid that she would hurt us. Can you imagine the anxiety, that anxiety of being five and being afraid that you would hurt your newborn baby sister or your parents? My fifth grader has been told by other students, "Pull your mask up or else she'll kill me." And that is the narrative that the schools are pushing onto our kids, and it is not scientific. My daughter is literally asked to wear a mask over her flute when she plays in the school and is told that she can cut holes in it so that it can go over the flute. My husband is an experienced scientist with a PhD in statistics who used to work for the CDC's mortality statistics branch in Washington DC. And he has consulted with scientists in nearly every field, helping them with their research, helping design studies and poking holes on what they can and cannot claim based on their design study. We were vaccinated as soon as we could be in April 2020 and we had our kids vaccinated when they were eligible as well so that they could have some sense of normalcy again. I was personally all for indoor masking amid much uncertainty in the spring and summer of 2020, but since then, the data really has not supported it for at least the last 15 months. Forced masking our kids in school is a decision based on poorly-designed correlation studies promoted by the current administration's leaders at the CDC. And they ignore basic statistical biases that are not supported by the larger international scientific literature. The MMWR reports that supporting masking from the CDC, they are not peer-reviewed. And my husband is someone who has reviewed many scientific papers for various academic journals and he says he would not have passed those versions of the studies at all. Thank you. One of the most important statistical biases when it comes to kids and masking is what we can and cannot measure in real time, which is long-term mental health and learning effects. In the spring, I had a child who was having some suicidal thoughts and ended up in the CCMC Emergency Psych Department. And it was one of the worst things I've ever seen in my entire life. It was overflowing with children. There were kids sleeping in the hallway on chairs. There weren't enough rooms. We were in a room with a bunch of other people. And I was six months pregnant, sleeping on a metal chair every night because there just wasn't enough room. And there were some kids that had been there for days or weeks because they couldn't be seen yet. They were short-staffed and there were too many kids. COVID-19 is never going away and it is likely that practically everybody in the country will have had it by this time next year. Most people haven't got, did not get it until vaccinations and therapeutics were developed. And that originally was the goal and we did it. It may take courage to get things fully back to normal, but it really is the best thing for the overall public health of our community. The mandates so narrowly focused on one aspect of health hurt our kids and sentenced them to unforeseen consequences despite that we have incredible vaccines, therapeutics, and COVID-19 is much less severe than it used to be.
Hi, I'm Lori Boyko. I live at 15 Oakhurst Road in Simsbury. And before I start talking, I just want to point out that in a room full of people that are asking for the masks to be removed, mostly with people that don't wear masks when I see them anywhere else, out of consideration for the people here, they are wearing their masks. This is not a consideration issue, but one of compliance. I've spent the last six months begging you to remove the masks from our children. We shouldn't have to beg for our freedom. I've sat side by side with some of you and 25 other people at town meetings, all of us unmasked. I honestly don't know what to say anymore. I have read and cited scientific studies and professional opinions from world-renowned medical and epidemiological specialists from Yale and Johns Hopkins, Tufts, Stanford, and Berkeley, and so many more. I've detailed raw data from the CDC and medical journal articles that confirm children are not at risk from the virus. According to every source I can find, including the governor's press conference yesterday, the predominant circulating variant Omicron produces far less severe disease and almost all adults in the schools have been vaccinated and can wear masks if they so choose. Masking must now and always should have been a personal choice. For two full years now, we adults have sacrificed our children. We've damaged their well-being, set back their learning, and they still haven't been able to catch up, destroyed their mental health, and ruined their social development to protect vulnerable adults who were and are very capable of protecting themselves. We have literally traded their futures by making them shields for us. How incredibly thoughtless and selfish of the adults. Shame on us all, all of us. You've heard many detrimental issues associated with wearing masks. You've heard many detrimental issues associated with wearing masks. Masks are not a risk-free solution. You've heard about the damage that's been done to the kids? I will also add that I've experienced with kids, rashes that won't go away on their faces, kids that don't want to stop wearing masks now, not because they're afraid of the virus, but because they can hide behind them. And a couple weeks ago at the high school, a student vomited into his mask, which is a very real aspiration danger. So masks are not risk-free. We can't undo the damage. We can't unring the bell. But we can make different decisions moving forward. We know better, and now we must do better. There really is no other right choice. We must unmask the children.
Hello? Can you hear me? I don't think this thing is on. Can you hear me now?
It's for a TV.
Oh, it's not on, okay. My name is Jennifer Morrow at 52 Wheeler Road in Simsbury. I have lived in this area most of my life, in Simsbury as an adult, as an adult for over 20 years. I have four children who have attended Simsbury Public Schools their entire school career. Our oldest daughter graduated in 2020. Our youngest daughter will graduate this year. Our oldest son will graduate next year, and our youngest son is a freshman this year. Our freshman has, son has received special, received special services since he was four, all fully provided by the school. He has autism, ADHD, and suffers from high anxiety. We are extremely grateful for the services that have been given, and most importantly, for the partnership and support that we have had with the school. As you can imagine, my perspective is a bit more unique than other parents, just given all of those circumstances. The reason why I am speaking tonight is to voice our support of fully removing the mask mandate in schools. There are many things we have learned throughout this pandemic and many things we will continue to learn. Because it's near to my heart, I will address my grave concern about the impact that wearing masks has had and will continue to have on these children, especially children with special needs. As a parent of special needs child, I need to talk about it. Think of the child who has a speech delay. How is he supposed to learn how to pronounce words properly? Or articulate a thought or concept when he cannot see his speech therapist's face or his teacher's face or a classmate's face? How is he supposed to learn facial expressions or understand social cues? The impact of keeping a mask on at school is detrimental to his development. We may never know the impact that this has caused. As a parent of four teenagers, I need to express my concern about the impact that the mask mandate has had on their mental health. Two of mine fell into depression, one of mine we almost lost. The mask mandate provides an opportunity to hide behind the mask in more ways than one, and this is not a healthy behavior. It's completely opposite of healthy. As a longtime member of this community, I need to also express my concern as I see people's eyes glaze over as I walk by them in the grocery store. We've seemingly lost the ability to look people in the eye. The small act of making eye contact and smiling at someone can change that person's day. I hope we can remember how to do that again someday. For our, for the sake of our children, our families, our community, I hope that day comes very soon. Please help support our children, our families, our schools, our community, and remove the mask mandates in our schools. Thank you very much for your time.
Hello, I'm Suzanne Hayes, and I live at 12 Fairview Street in Simsbury. Masks in schools should be optional effective February 28th. The mask mandate imposes a role that is impossible to strictly and consistently enforce. The enforcement of this mandate requires educators to micromanage our students in a way that is unacceptable and damaging to their mental health slash self-esteem. The CDC guidelines as updated on January 28th state, "To protect yourself and others from COVID-19, the CDC continues to recommend that you wear the most protective mask you can that fits well and you will wear consistently." Even with a mask mandate in place, it appears our students are not wearing masks that fit well, nor are they wearing masks consistently. I was at a Simsbury High School hockey game recently and was thrilled with the amount of student support. When I looked at the students' section, most were indeed wearing masks, but almost every single teenager had the mask hanging below their nose or strapped around their chin. When my teens send me Snapchats from school or I see pictures from the school day on social media, most are indeed wearing masks. The masks, however, are rarely covering both their mouths and noses. More often than not, the masks are secured around the chin. Whose job is it to monitor that these masks fit well and are being worn consistently as suggested by the CDC? And the more important question, do we really want the most important adult in our children's lives enforcing, read, micromanaging, specific mask-wearing rules over and over and over again? If not, is the mandate actually providing the safety and benefits as outlined by the CDC? I think not. Yes, some teachers are strictly enforcing the rules of mask-wearing. They are reminding students to cover their noses and mouths. They are scolding students because their mask is down again. They are assigning detentions to students who violate the mask-wearing policies. And you know what that does to our children? It shames them, it humiliates them. It tells them that they are wrong for wanting a break to breathe or simply let their face feel free from being masked. It is only natural to remove your mask a few times a day or even a few times an hour. It is uncomfortable, unnatural, and an unwelcome distraction. Most, adults included, will pull their mask down without even realizing it. It is an expected, normal human response, much like hiccuping or scratching an itch. When teachers scold our children or even politely remind them to fix their mask, it sends the message to our kids that they are wrong or bad or noncompliant, that they can't listen to the basic needs of their bodies, and that wanting fresh air or a face free from a cloth covering is unacceptable. And so the problem remains. Mandate masks in schools even though there is no realistic way to ensure that students' masks fit properly and are worn consistently as suggested by the CDC? Mandate masks in school, schools and have some teachers enforce it strictly while others do not? Mandate masks in school and remove the beauty of a smile and the power of a frown? Mandate masks in school and remove the ability to breathe fresh air, to read lips, to feel authentically connected to another human, a friend, a teacher, a coach? Mandate masks without the ability and perhaps without the desire to fully, consistently, and strictly enforce the mandate? It's nothing more than a smokescreen. Our children are only young once. They deserve to see as many smiles as they possibly can each day. They deserve to breathe fresh air. They deserve to wear a mask if they or their parents so choose, and they deserve not to wear one too. Let us decide what is best for our children and remove the stress and inconsistencies of implementing a rule that simply can't be and hasn't been consistently and tightly enforced. Thank you for your time.
I'm Dr. Kristin Ingram. I am a resident of Simsbury on Village Road. I have a doctor of nursing practice, I'm a nurse practitioner with an educational and professional background in public health. In March of 2020, Dr. Fauci stated, "There is no reason to be walking around in a face mask. They do not offer the perfect protection that people think they do," end quote. In your consideration of the mitigation strategies going forward, there is a moral imperative to critically examine the efficacy of masks, to objectively weigh the risk-benefit ratio against what is irrefutable, what we know about child development. The objective truth comes down to that there are no randomized controlled trials showing evidence that wearing a face mask other than a properly and professionally fitted N95 decreases the transmission of COVID-19. The internet and even our scientific journals are rife with anecdotes and very badly performed studies respectively that produce no actual statistically significant evidence. The overwhelming majority of any study done on the efficacy of masks in small populations throughout the past two years have failed to control for handwashing and other traditional conservative mitigation factors. This means we cannot assume that the masks were the factor responsible for any decrease in prevalence. It equally could have been simple handwashing and the isolation of sick people. There was a meta-analysis conducted in 2020 that only reviewed mask studies that were not combined with handwashing and physical distancing. It showed insufficient evidence to recommend masks in the absence of other interventions. Deaths across our state due to COVID-19 were an average of 97 a day prior to vaccinations and the advent of therapeutics. In January, the average was 27. While this is not a cause for celebration, cases in the Hartford area have also risen by 300%. So while cases have risen by 300%, we are seeing less than a quarter of the mortality rate we saw prior to vaccine. Overwhelmingly, these mortalities occur in those who have chosen to refuse the vaccine. Based on our numbers in January here in the Hartford area, my husband's chance of hospitalization with COVID-19 is 0.0063%. One of my children, 0.0024%. These numbers do not warrant widespread mitigation strategies beyond vaccination. Surgical masks are meant for one-time use. A surgical mask is not designed to protect for hours at a time. It's certainly not designed to protect for days at a time. We must realize what our face masks are not capable of doing. The evidence clearly demonstrates that with the advent of quite literally the most effective vaccine the world has ever known, and the advent of monoclonal antibodies and targeted therapeutics, masking is unnecessary. I don't need an umbrella full of holes when I am indoors. It would take much longer than three minutes to demonstrate how antithetical it is to all we know about child development to mandate that children in their school community wear a face covering involuntarily for years now at a time. I ask you to follow the evidence and remove masks from our guidelines as you have faithfully followed the evidence and removed plastic barriers, the isolation of well children, and the restriction of free play. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Els Boratio, and I'm a freshman at Simsbury High School. And I didn't plan on coming up here to speak today, I just came to take a yearbook photo, but I feel like, I feel like as a kid, I have to come here and say something that I wish I had the platform to say for two years now. I'm a varsity cheerleader, and even just being on the sidelines and seeing kids in stands who have to wear a mask except they don't even wear a mask over their nose when in the stands. And it's just crazy to me to see that because we're forcing these masks on kids except kids don't wear it correctly. Because the truth of the matter is, and I can speak for kids because, you know, I'm a kid, I can say that kids do not want to wear these masks. Okay, I've talked to so many kids today, this has been a big topic in my school. Kids, oh, are you going to wear a mask if it's optional, are you not? But the truth of the matter is, kids were saying, oh, they just want to wear it because they feel uncomfortable with their acne, they feel uncomfortable with the way their skin looks, the pores in their skin. I have acne, I can say right now that even I kind of feel the same way, but I feel like we have to start showing our faces again. It's, it's, it's just time to do that now, okay? We can't just sit behind a screen on Zoom, we have to learn face-to-face. It's so hard for me to make friends at school, to see kids when I can't even see their faces. Okay, it's so hard, I'm literally, and like, I see kids, even during band, kids who play trumpet, who play anything that, like, with their mouth, they have to wear a mask with a hole in the middle. Can you, can somebody here just explain the logics behind that? Seriously, like, someone, please explain this to me. And, um, I, just above all else, I think that if, you know, like, Mrs. Walzak said, like, if not now, when? Are we going to wear these for 10 years? Even people at the US Open, my mom and my brother are big tennis fans, and they went to the US Open, thousands of people don't have to wear a mask there, but we, but kids, 20, like, 25 people in a tiny room have to wear a mask. It's time to end it now, I think that this whole masking is a farce and it ends now. Thank you.
Dear Board Members, I'm a mother of three school-aged children. I'm also a PTO board member, a room parent, a soccer coach, a board member of one of the sports division teams in our town, a volunteer in the Salvation Army. My husband worked in the emergency room in Hartford when COVID hit.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Can you just give us your name?
Monica Madrid. Monica Madrid. My husband worked in the emergency room at Hartford when the pandemic started, and he's an Iraq War veteran. We are involved, and we volunteer, and we devote our time into this community. I was also a business owner in town and have lost my business due to the implications of COVID. My family has seen and has experienced the effects of COVID firsthand. With that being said, I'm here urging the board to make masks optional. There isn't anything, and there isn't anyone, that will prevent a parent from masking their kid should they wish to. It is my and my family's right and decision to choose for our own children. It's a freedom of choice, allow parents to make that decision for themselves. On Monday, the governor made it clear when he said that people need to get back to making their own health decisions, it's time. Masking is known to have no medical impact or protection on children, but it has had a learning impact on our children. Yesterday, the Catholic Diocese in Hartford has announced that they will be unmasking all schools effective February 28th. During the board meeting in August, Matt Curtis spoke and said that his hands were tied as it related to making a decision on masks. That excuse can no longer be used, the governor has passed the puck to you. You are, we are expecting an announcement to be made by the board as to what actions will be taken. All schools in Connecticut were tied because they were required, were tied to money. We basically sold our kids short because of the money that the government was going to give every school district, and because of that, they were requiring masks. I am asking for the board to answer, what will the board do and what do they plan on doing with the ARPESSER $966,000 that the town will be receiving? Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak? All right, thank you all for coming out. We do have several emails that we need to read into the record at this point. Jen, you want to go first?
Sure. Dear Simsbury Board of Education, we are writing this letter out of our concern that the detrimental effects of a long-term masking on our children is not being factored into the masking policy currently in place at Simsbury Schools. At the beginning of the pandemic, when little was known about the virus, it was understandable that broad, temporary measures were put in place out of an abundance of caution. Now, two years later, we know so much more than we did at the start, and it's time to recognize the damage we are doing to our children by preventing positive test cases as the primary metric of public health while ignoring the harm inflicted by broad mitigation strategies. In January 20, in a January 25th op-ed in the Washington Post, Dr. Shira Doran of Tufts University School of Medicine recommended that schools can finally safely make masks optional for students and staff based on the January 14th updated guidance from the CDC, which states that N95 respirators are more protective than surgical masks, which in turn protect better than the cloth mask. Her reasoning goes on to state, "Respirators and other high-quality masks are highly effective at protecting their wearers regardless of what people around them are doing." That makes the old mantra, "My mask protects you, your mask protects me," obsolete. As a result, schools can finally safely make masks optional for students and staff. Universal masking policies have not come without costs. In certain parts of the country where CDC mask guidelines were rigorously adhered to, children have not seen the mask of their teachers or classmates since early 2020. This affects learning and development, particularly for our youngest learners. The data shows that we are now at a point where families can make the decision on whether their child would benefit from a mask and they would not be putting others at risk by deciding not to. by deciding not to. Dr. Doran goes on to conclude, "We urge public health and school officials to educate communities on one-way masking, emphasizing personal choice regarding self-protection and supporting those who choose to remain masked. Time and energy that staff spend policing mask use is far more, is far better spent on teaching and supporting children. It's time we stop worrying about what others are doing and started focusing on protecting ourselves. We have many more tools in 2022 than we did in 2020, and our policies should shift to reflect these advantages." Our children have sacrificed a lot to protect us. Now it's time for us to give them their childhood back. We hope that Simsbury School, Public Schools adopts this way forward as other school districts across the country are beginning to do. We appreciate all of the hard work of our teachers, administrators, and school board during this trying time. Sincerely yours, Jason and Ari, I apologize for not having that right, Von Bartelt. Okay, next one is Simsbury Board of Education. I'm writing in favor of school mask choice regardless of vaccination status. Please allow our Simsbury students to unmask if they wish. Michelle Brady, West Simsbury, Connecticut. Dear Board of Education, I am writing because I understand that you are the primary point of contact and decision-maker with regards to masking policy in the Farmington Valley. I certainly empathize with your position and doubt that you ever imagined having such a responsibility when you took on this role. That said, I would like to voice my support for mask choice in the Farmington Valley as it pertains to children in school. The towns you oversee are filled with many like-minded parents who want nothing but the best for their children and the community as a whole. The past two years have been painful as the policies have created a major divide amongst parents as well as their schools and communities. It is my belief that mask choice will help to alleviate much of this tension and anger amongst individuals in the Farmington Valley. With two years of data, to interpret the conclusion as to whether or not masking of children is an effective policy is murky at best. Experts on both sides of the argument cannot reach any decisive conclusion as to whether the policy made children safer. What can be stated without a doubt is that masking of infants and toddlers has led to measurable development delays in speech, mental health, and behavioral outbursts. Just the other day, the U.S. Surgeon General linked masking of teenagers to a radical uptick of mental health and behavioral issues. Simply put, the upside of masking is limited to none, and the downside is severe. The cure is worse than the disease. Two years into the pandemic, all elderly at risk or immune-compromised parties have access to vaccines, double or triple masking, and any other measure they deem fit. As parents and stakeholders in this community, we are asking for the freedom to choose if we mask our children at the family level. Thank you for taking the time to hear this message. I know that many different people are offering many different opinions on this topic, but I firmly believe that mask choice is the best option for our great community. Please put this decision in the hands of the parents who have been, who had access to the data, weighed their decision, and believe that children need to be unmasked so that they have the opportunity to be children. I thank you for your time and for your consideration of my viewpoint. Sincerely, Jeff Witowski in Simsbury.
Sure. Need these. At that age, sorry. Simsbury Board of Education, I am writing in favor of school mask choice regardless of vaccination status. Please allow our Simsbury students to unmask if they wish. Erica Magliari, We Talk. I think, saving when, so I don't know if I need to read that one.
But this, is that Helen?
Yeah, yeah. Dear members of the Board of Education, my name is Megan Myers, and I live at 425 Bushy Hill Road, Simsbury, Connecticut. I am both a parent of two students in the Simsbury Public Schools and a licensed clinical social worker, working with children, adolescents, and adults in the surrounding area. I'd like to begin by thanking each of you for volunteering your time to serve our community. I last wrote to you in August 2021, ahead of this school, of this current school year, expressing my support for the removal of the mask mandate. Tonight, I ask the same. Back in August, we had no vaccination option for children ages five to 12. Now we do. The adults in our community have had ample opportunity to be vaccinated and boosted. Our town has extremely high vaccination, vaccination rates among our most vulnerable populations. Throughout the course of the pandemic, children have suffered through school closures, lockdowns, and mask mandates to protect the adults around them. We have heard messages about children's resiliency and how they don't seem to mind wearing masks. We have sacrificed our children's social, emotional growth, and mental health for nearly two full years. We now recognize that masking and other mitigation measures do have a significant negative impact on our children. I ask you, how long will we continue to force children to bear the burden of protecting adults? I appreciate the district's recognition of this growing mental health crisis among our children in quote, "The Board of Education Meeting Minutes of January 25th, 2022." The addition of two social workers will create a dedicated social worker at each elementary school to address emerging mental health issues exacerbated by the pandemic. We must do everything in our power to protect and support our children from continued social, emotional harm. I ask you to act now to remove the mask mandate. Send the message to our children that it is no longer their burden to protect the grownups. In fact, it never should have been their responsibility. It is our duty as adults to release that burden. Thank you.
I'm up.
Yep.
All right. This is from Christine, Trafik County, 21 North Road. Good evening to the board, and thank you for the opportunity to speak about masking our kids. Welcome to day 697 of 15 days to slow the spread, quote-unquote. I'll be honest, I can't figure out if this truly will fall on the superintendents, as Lamont stated, or if it's just a political fake-out and control will be retained by the state health agencies, which Simsbury will be required to follow. I would like to understand from Mr. Curtis's perspective how he understands this will work and how much decision-making he expects to have. But let's hope for a moment that the decision will fall onto Mr. Curtis and by extension, the Board of Education. This is a huge opportunity for Simsbury Public Schools to take back our ownership and control. There is no significant benefit to forcing students to wear the masks. The CDC validates this, so the very small, if any, benefit from making them wear masks is overshadowed by the negative impact of forcing masking, which includes kids falling behind, decreased connections with students, stunted emotional growth, increased anxiety, and more. These are proven existing risks. Our kids are suffering. I can't imagine you believe these risk outcomes are outweighed by any perceived benefit of forcing masking. These kids are forced to wear masks all day during school, and then do you know what they do when they leave school? They have sleepovers without masks. They drive around in cars together without masks. They eat in restaurants together without masks. They go to parties without masks. They go on vacation without masks. They live entirely, the entirety of their lives outside of school without masks. To control forcing masks in school isn't rational nor reasonable. It's painful and shameful. The school mask mandate is changing to, changing who these kids are meant to be. Anyone who says they will be fine, kids are resilient, are fooling themselves. They aren't that resilient. I'm truly hopeful that you will make the decision that on 3-1, our kids will enter school, some for the first time ever, and see the faces of their friends and teachers. Today, this, today is day 697 of 15 days to slow the spread. Let's end this now. And then I have, this is from the Barcelletti, Berencelli family, sorry, Claire Berencelli. I don't know where she lives. I'm submitting the following comments to be read at the Board of Education meeting on 2/8/22. Thank you. In light of the governor's recent announcement that he expects the statewide mask mandate to be lifted on February 28th, our family would like to express our support for the district to remove all mask requirements for students and staff within the school system. At the beginning of the school year, Superintendent Curtis indicated that he would not impose mask requirements if there was no statewide mandate. We hope this is still the case. Thank you. And this is from Chris Papa, and I don't have an address there either. Greetings, we have, I'm sending this email on behalf of myself, Christopher Papa, and my wife Sarah. We ask the following to be read at the meeting. Greetings. We have been made aware that the governor will be handing the child mask policy decisions over to the towns in the coming weeks. We understand this to mean that the Board of Education will have a say. We are parents of three children attending Simsbury Public Schools, and we would like our opinion of this matter heard. The mask mandate for all of our children has to go. The masks have not proven to be effective in stopping COVID. What they have been proven to do is cause our children to breathe in their own CO2 all day long. My children complain of headaches, lightheadedness, dizzy feelings from the masks. They are suffering psychological harms that will damage them socially as they are still developing abilities to discern nonverbal communication based on facial expression. They cannot get a clear sense of the expression of a natural human emotions while at school. This is a huge problem that gets very little attention. The kids have a 99.998% or better chance of surviving COVID. Throughout this winter, COVID has swept through town and schools in spite of strict mask protocols or vaccine status. The jabs and boosters have done nothing to stop the transmission of the virus. The masks are not stopping this thing either, or slowing it down at all. As I recall, one epidemiologist explained early on in the pandemic, "Trying to stop a virus is like trying to stop the wind from blowing." We do not want our children to attend a school or be raised in a town that forces them to comply with these draconian masking measures. By continuing to mandate masks, you further stifle their natural freedom and darken their childhoods. The mask diminishes their empowerment and sense of self-worth, and instead fills them with fear, dread, and weakness. These submissive restraining conditions are not what we as parents have chosen for our children. They have been imposed by the state and enforced by you. We won't stand for it any longer. Like many others who have put up with this far too long, our family is done with the school mask mandate. We will continue to stand up and speak out until we have a choice for our children once again. Our recommendation to this board is as follows. Present the mask as an option. Make it a choice for the parent and child. If you feel the need to encourage mask use, that's fine. However, making it mandatory is using force and removing choice. These are our children, and we as parents should have the ultimate authority when it comes to decision impacting the health and well-being of our children. Introduce choice. The mask should be not mandatory to attend school. Please do the right thing and help end the school mask mandate now.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate everybody who wrote in and had their comments shared. I appreciate all of you who came down here to share your thoughts with us. We, as you know, this has just been 24 hours. We are waiting to see what comes out of the legislature. We will convene and discuss, and by our next meeting, hopefully have more to share with you. But we just need to process the data as, the information as it comes forward to us. So thank you for being partners in this. I know it's not something any of you wanted to do, but we do appreciate all your feedback. With that said, we are actually moving on to committee reports and board communications. Anybody who would like to know how we're spending grant money, I suggest you stay for a budget discussion. You would be, you'll be pleased. All right, so Alex.
So as we all know, February is Black History Month.
Do you want to give them one second to?
Yeah, give me one.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody.
We're going to help with people leaving.
Thank you.
Yeah. We could break for a minute.
Yeah, all right, yeah. Everybody can relax for five minutes, and then we'll reconvene. Okay. Okay, we are now back in session, and we are going to move on to committee reports and board of ed communications. Alex.
So February is Black History Month. The high school and several elementary schools are celebrating the contributions African-Americans have made to our country, the workshops, events, and assemblies, a jazz ensemble performance coming up tomorrow, student morning announcements, and a display put in the SHS lobby by the, our honor society. On a different note, course registration is underway and will be complete tomorrow to 9. Henry James celebrated the Lunar New Year last week with announcements and songs from students involved in Chinese classes. Black History Month is also celebrated with an activity joining hands in the giant peace symbol in the main hallway. Tooten and Latimer both celebrated World Read Aloud Day this week, a global effort that has now been celebrated in over 173 countries for 13 years. Also, the canned food drive called the Super Bowl has also begun, ending with a spirit day this Friday to wear your favorite sports jersey. Squadron Lion is starting a February fitness challenge that students, friends, and families can participate in. Also, to celebrate Squadron Lion's 50th birthday, each grade level has been assigned different food items to collect for the Simsbury Food Pantry for those in need. This event started yesterday and will continue through next Friday, the 18th. And that's all.
Thank you very much. I'm all set, thanks. Jeff.
Yes, hi. I participated in a state hold meeting with the state last week regarding the review of the standards for the remote learning that's going to be recommended, you know, in the fall. Great experience, the comments are going to be due, got to get our comments in by the 11th, so.
Was this through CAE or?
No, this was through Department of Education.
Great. Wonderful. I'm glad you could do that. That's great. Stan.
I don't have anything except a little side comment. I don't know if Alex said it or not, to be honest, you kind of, your character here here are old years, but the theater group, I wanted to just follow up with the snow delays and everything else, what those kids went through, and got that play on, and it was so good, and so, they did so much, whatever, just wanted to give a shout out.
There was definitely some anxiety yesterday because people were worried that there was going to be an early closing, and then the last show would be canceled because then that one wouldn't be rescheduled, so I'm glad that everybody got to have their last show.
Good job, Mr. Curtis.
I don't know.
Take those things.
It was a really amazing show.
It was excellent.
It was fabulous. The kids did such a good job. I was slip-sliding in my car to the show last night, so I went very slow, and it was, it was fine, but the kids did an amazing job, given all the challenges they had. Kudos to Stuart, Anna Rachuti, our own alum director. Great job by everybody.
It's amazing that these kids all, there are so many kids involved on so many levels, and they all, like, when they do the final bow, and they are all different, you look at them all, and you're like, wait, these kids are not actors necessarily. Some of them will be, some of them are going to be dentists, some of them are going to be mechanics, some of them are going to be, there are so many things that these kids, this is just such a piece, a small piece of their world that they will embrace and take with them, and what they learned are such life skills, and it just, I just think it's so fun.
And the musicians, I mean, all of it. You look at the students, and every, they have a hand in every pot at that production.
It's really cool.
And it was really impressive, so, kudos to them.
And Frozen Jr. is coming up next at the, at Henry James. The end of the month.
The end of February or the end of March?
End of February, last weekend in February, first weekend in March.
Okay, great, thank you. Lyd.
What is the, what is the play? What do they?
Frozen Junior.
Frozen Junior.
Now it's all in your head.
That's right.
Do you like to do the rendition job?
No, that's all right.
We got, we got a duet over here. Lyd, what do you got for us? You going to sing?
Yeah, I'm not singing, but, but anyway, just, I just want to briefly tell you a little bit, last, a few weeks ago was January, so I was in DC for National School Board Association, so we had our board meetings and committee meetings, but we also had the Monday Equity Symposium, and it was very, it was done very, very well considering that we had to also do it virtual, so part virtual hybrid, and throughout the whole weekend between that and the advocacy, we did have speakers that unfortunately couldn't come due to, due to other schedules and COVID and what happened. But in the Equity Symposium, we had some great panel discussions. We also had a number of workshops, and some of them are obviously for equity, leading for equity, confronting systemic inequities of policy solutions, keeping communities safe. We also talked about trauma, and we talked about community schoolyards, and so we had a number of stories from the field presentation, and they really were very, very interesting. We had about 450 of us that were there in DC, and everyone had to, you know, show proof of vax to be allowed to, to enter that. But it was great because we did have some new speakers that came and some new board members, the first time they had come, and it really lifted up, this is our third year doing the Equity Symposium for the entire day, so it really did give a good introspect to what is going on around the country, you know, within districts and things. We also had the Equity Institute, and that was for two days. The third day, we were supposed to have been on the hill, but unfortunately, we couldn't because state buildings are not open, and so we couldn't, couldn't be there. But we will see our Connecticut congressman here in, in. But we will see our Connecticut congressman here and senators here in Connecticut. So the Advocacy Institute, again, was another one. We, you know, had to divert from what we normally do with this just because of the scheduling. But, you know, we talk about the federal advocacy, quality of public ed for the students with disabilities, about IDEA, you know, insights on a lot of different state issues. The general section was a lot on the legal advocacy. That's what is being pursued on the Hill. The congressional luncheon was actually virtual. None of the four speakers from the Congress were able to make it. We had also a great session on cybersecurity. And one of the best sessions that they had was the general session of the student views and education and learning and a perspective. And it really was very, very interesting to have the students, they're all seniors in high school in the DC area, speak with a lot of the leaders that were there and also a lot of the panelists. So that was, that was it, and we are going to be.
It was a busy couple of days.
Pardon?
Busy couple of days with a lot of good information.
Yeah, in DC, it really is. And unfortunately, we could not go on the Hill, which we normally would do for an entire day.
Well, hopefully, our congressional delegation will make that possible here for you.
Yeah, we're planning on it. We're planning on it. Again, it's on their schedules. And again, you know, if we don't stay in the ear of a congressional delegation in DC, you know, and here, they won't be seeing us. That is not one part that we have to do. But we couldn't even have the USDA, the USDA, the State Department of Education visit on the Hill due to COVID, so that was, you know, a disappointment too. But that said, and of course, you know, as we're in legislative times, as Matt alluded to before, you know, Congress got back to work, and so will, you know, all the states around the country, including ours. So there's a lot of work still to be done ahead of us. And while I have you here, I hope that you'll be able to join the CREG legislative forum. It is on February 17th. It will be virtual, not in person, and so yours truly here will be, you know, representing CREG. And, but we do hope that, you know, you join as board members and superintendents and legislators will be there also. So save your questions for them. It's really important that our legislators, in particular in Simsbury, hear from us and what's going on. So that's my report.
All right, great, thank you. Todd.
Okay, I just want to give my thanks to the people who came up and spoke to us earlier and are here, apologize or back to you guys. You know, it's clear there's a lot of passion about what people think. And, you know, I said this before, but I appreciate being in a community where people can share their thoughts, and we have respectful, respectful conversations about it. So I thank everybody for readying and coming up tonight.
Brian.
So kind of just to piggyback on what Todd said, I don't have any committee reports tonight, but, you know, just for the public, as a parent of three kids in the school, as a spouse to my wife who's a teacher, just want to say thank you to everybody who came up today in person and those who wrote in today to speak. I know it's not easy. You know, I agree with some of the comments that were said. You know, I know we don't typically reply or respond in public to public comment, but it takes courage to do that. You know, I don't think anybody in this room wants to wear masks for the rest of our lives. I just want that to kind of get out there. I think, you know, a lot of us have kids in the school system. My kids today all came up to me, and they, they were like, ooh, it's a big night. You know, they heard about the news that came down yesterday. And my kids don't want to wear masks. So to hear from people that, you know, I'm in a room where everybody wants us to wear masks is just not true, at least for me. I won't speak for anyone else, but I just wanted to put that out there, so thank you.
So the only thing I have to share is that I stand corrected. Frozen Junior is the weekends of March 25th and April 1st.
Did your phone light up like a second just frozen?
March 25th and April 1st.
Thank you for the correction.
You are welcome.
Nothing tonight.
Ms. Amy. Jason.
Nothing until recommended actions.
Okay. Mr. Curtis.
I am all set. No, I, you know, like, well, I appreciate everybody coming out and tried to do my best early on to clarify what my understanding of the process is. And I think it is important, while we know the direction that they're saying, public health is going in, and we have continued to follow that advice, get our eyes on what those documents are, and then communicate what next steps are to the community and to our staff and everybody else. But we have been clear all along, as I said before, that we've made our decisions in concert with them, and I think they've made clear what direction they're moving in, so.
Right, right. And just to piggyback on sort of Todd and Brian, I do, while I do always appreciate the respectful tone that we seem to have at our public audiences, which is unfortunately increasingly rare these days, I am grateful that we have a community that manages that respect level. And I think it's always dangerous to look at a body of anybody and assume everybody's group think. We do the best we can with the information we have, and we follow what we need to follow as a town. And I think we're all looking forward to seeing our next steps. So that said, we move on to recommended actions. Approval of the minutes of January 25th, please. Can I get motions?
I motion that we approve the minutes of January 25th. 25th?
Yep, is there a second?
One second.
Sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I'm abstaining.
No opposition, motion carries, okay. Personnel.
Yeah, two items that require your action tonight, and then one is informational. The first is a resignation of a fourth-grade teacher at Tooten Hills. This is a pretty rare occurrence for us when a veteran teacher leaves in the middle of the year. Leslie Turner has been a staple of our Tooten Hills community. She has an opportunity to move to another part of the country, and she has taken it. So she will be relocating to a warmer climate than Simsbury and will be finishing up with us at the end of next week. And Ms. Belmonte is in the process to interview a replacement as we speak, so. So that one requires your, the motion that's on your exhibit.
Can someone make that motion, please?
Sure. Move that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Leslie Turner effective February 18, 2022.
And a second?
Oh, yeah, I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And thank you, and enjoy warmer weather.
The second action is one of the announcements of our retirement at the end of the year. This is for anybody who has kids at Terriffill School. They know the impact of Jan Hanlon, who is the school psychologist, jack-of-all-trades at Terriffill, and really just a staple of the community. Mr. Mattis acknowledges a chance to actually become the most influential person in the building after Jan's retirement. So after, it'll be 18 years for Jan at Terriffill School at the end of the year, but she has the opportunity to take her retirement effective June 30th.
I will, I will first say that my kids have been at Terriffill, so I have to bear this without saying, Jan is an amazing person. She's done so much for my children and many children at that school, and she's still out there every day in the cold helping kids into the building. And so she will be missed. But that said, we move that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Jan Hamlin effective June 30th, 2022.
Can I get a second? Any discussion other than Jen's already? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much for your years of service. We appreciate you.
And the last one is informational that we have hired one of our social workers. This is actually with grant funding. The positions that you're supporting that would go into next year's budget, this is grant funding to get one of those positions. Our hope was to get it in by mid-year and carry it forward. Marissa is starting on February 14th, so just around the corner, and will be placed at Squadron Line School and has just a great interview process, lots of energy coming from really rich experiences in the Waterbury Public Schools, some really demanding work, and is excited to come to Simsbury. And that would be one of the two, if this budget supports the social workers, that we would be moving forward into one of those positions. So congratulations to Marissa.
Thank you. And now we're on to the adoption of the six-year capital improvement plan.
So this six-year plan is a capital improvement plan that we've seen a couple of times now. And in its first year, it will improve some air conditioning and other climate control areas. One specific is the first floor physical that is going to be completed in the summer. Other items in the first year are two roof replacements, one in Central, one in Terriffill. Also, some major plumbing projects replacing old equipment in the buildings at Tooten Hills and Squadron. There's a district network infrastructure improvement, which is a capital fund that we use every other year. In this year, we're looking primarily to improve the Wi-Fi in the district and some other equipment improvements as well there. In the remaining five years of the plan, it is district-wide more projects, such as replacing boilers, replacing pavement in parking lots. And if there are any questions, be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we can move on to adopting the plan.
So I'm just looking at what's in the packet, and I just don't see the climate control measure. Am I missing it?
It's in Exhibit 3, it's the second bullet.
Else if I turn the page. I was flicking on the backside. I have this, got it.
And I will add, the 1.6 million for the climate control is actually $450,000 from the district's capital budget, and 1.2 million is, we plan to get from ARPA funds.
From the town.
Terriffill. That's a great piece of the ARPA funds. The third floor will thank you. Sure. Any questions for Jason on this?
We've been talking about it for a while, so I feel very comfortable with it.
I know.
Thank you very much.
Just wanted to double back.
No, I appreciate it.
All right, so we need a motion to approve. Does somebody, will, can someone make that motion for me, please?
I'll move that the Board of Education's six-year capital improvement plan for the period of 2023 through 2028 be adopted.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry, I just, I didn't see everybody's hands, so I'm just kind of checking. Everybody's good?
Yes.
Unanimously? Thank you all very much. Thank you, Jason. All right. Now we are on to information reports, and that is the 2223 budget. Mr. Curtis.
Okay, so I've been told by Mr. Sullivan I need to be brief because Jersey Mike's is the place of choice, and we don't know where we'll go if it's closed down.
We've got an hour.
I got an hour, okay. Very good, very good. So just want to start with a quick thank you to everybody that's been involved in this process. And I'm going to, I'm going to spend a minute or two, as I initiate this presentation, just to talk about the process a little bit, because I think it's important in terms of how we come to where we are tonight. Because tonight really is just pulling it all together, and there's no surprises. There's not information that we haven't already talked about. But we always start in our district in grounding ourselves in our strategic planning and our continuous improvement process. So I think it's always important for us to put our Board of Education goals out front, talk about the fact that when we make decisions, whether they're daily decisions, they're curricular decisions, or they're monetary decisions, we do so in alignment with our strategic plans and our strategic priorities. And I think you'll find as we go through the presentation this evening that the resources that we're advocating for and the pieces of the puzzle, so to speak, that we're adding certainly align with the top two goals that we have as a board, really ensuring student success and, you know, really creating supports and getting at that environment that we have within our schools. So again, about the process a little bit. This starts way back in November. We have what we call our tri-board meeting, which is a collaborative conversation amongst the three boards. And at that meeting, we do a fixed cost review, right? We put out at the time the information that we have about our contracts. We put out some of the themes that we're thinking about as we develop our process. And this year, I thought it was a really collaborative conversation with the Board of Finance in particular, where they didn't come out with a hard cap on the budget or hard guidance, recognized the fact that we're, as a school system, juggling multiple challenges as a result of the pandemic, and really wanted us to develop the budget and come through and talk about it as, as we get through the process. So that took place in kind of that November timeframe, late November, early December. We start meeting with our principals, our program directors, and giving them an opportunity to advocate for what they believe they need in their buildings. December, we come forward and we start that work with central office. We present to the Board of Ed. We've heard presentations, so you can flip to the next one, thanks. In January, we heard from Katie Crisula in terms of her programming and student needs. We followed that up with Neil's presentation, which, you know, I'll get to it in a minute. 80% of our overall budget is salaries and benefits. So when Neil talked about the personnel drivers and the personnel requests that we see, that's a big bulk of what we talk about on an annual basis. This past Saturday, we had what I thought was a very productive Board of Education workshop over at Henry James. At that point, we have a forum that a lot of questions are asked. We look at line item detail. We kind of get down to the nitty-gritty in terms of the piece of the puzzle that make the whole, whole number come together. And that culminates tonight from a superintendent's perspective when I put forward a more formal request of what the budget dollars will look like. So I had this slide, and we, it was interesting in planning this presentation, going back when we spoke to the Board of Finance early and developed our themes. And I think we stayed true to them throughout the process. So I'm not going to read each one of the bullets, certainly, but really what this budget is about, it's about identifying the supports we need, getting boots on the ground closest to our students to really work with them, support them through what's been a challenging time, whether that's intervention or that's mental health supports. We need to look at our staffing levels, equate them across the different buildings. And you'll see when we get to that part, and I know you're already aware, we have quite a few staffing requests this year. But the backend of the budget process has been, I think, equally as thoughtful. How can we fund these with some of the resources that are offered to us right now in terms of grant resources so that we don't add to the operating expense and the expense of the taxpayer? So it's kind of a balancing act this year, so to speak, that we'll get into in a few minutes. So there's the number, 77 million, a little over $77 million. Increase over last year's operating costs of 2.5 million. And overall, from a percentage increase, it's a 3.47 increase to the bottom line. So there's four, four pieces to this puzzle tonight. I'm going to give some contextual factors. I'll move through them pretty quick because we've seen them before. A little bit about enrollment, a little bit about cost factors. Personnel, again, go through the positions that we're, we've identified as important and some of those fixed costs. Certainly, some other drivers in the budget this year due to inflation and just coming out of COVID and things we needed to address from a budgetary standpoint. And then kind of how we want to offset this. We want to share with you tonight what our thoughts are in terms of, these are our needs. How can we reduce with collaboration with town ARPA funding as well as our own grant funding? All right, so here's a little background information. It's one of the, it's an audited number that we get from the state every year. It's called the per pupil expenditure. It's something that allows us to compare with other communities. It's lag data a little bit. It lags a year, but I think it's useful in terms of seeing how our spending equates with other towns of similar comparison, all right? So you can see what our per pupil expenditure was in 1920, gone up in 2021, about $900. You can see what the state average is, that we're below the state average. And then what I've done is put some rankings there, right? So DIRG-B are comparable communities. It's a list of comparable communities to Simsbury. There's 21 towns, and we're kind of right in the middle. We were in the middle last year. We were in the middle this year. Rank in the Hartford area among 27 towns. Rank in the Hartford area among 27 towns. We were eight last year, 12 this year. So a little bit of a shift there, I guess, to the good in terms of what you would say with a relative number going down a little bit. I put some of the peer communities that we often talk about. You can see where we stand there, a little bit lower than West Hartford, a little bit higher than Glastonbury, but everybody's in a similar ballpark in terms of comparative cost. Also on the low right, a little bit of historical information on where we've been as a Board of Ed over the last decade, in the last five years. And I think we have done a very good job working with the Board of Finance, working with the community, in coming in with smaller budget increases, really utilizing our declining enrollment to offset cost. I'll talk about that in a minute. So you can see our 3.47 is certainly higher than it has been in recent years, but I think we have, we have good rationale and reasons for, for why that is. So enrollment, I know that Neil in his presentation talked through the importance of enrollment and how we equate that to staffing levels. But we've seen a shift of enrollment, right? We sit here on an annual basis over the last 10 years or so and have talked about the significant decline in the number of students at the Simsbury Public Schools. That decline in enrollment was really a budget lever for us. It enabled us to reduce class, class sections over time because we needed less teachers and reinvest some of those dollars in other FTE and other areas, which is one of the key reasons we were able to come in with some of these smaller budget increases. That has become much more challenging as we're seeing enrollment growing at the elementary level and kind of evening off at the secondary level. So that's something we're going to have to be very mindful of over the next couple of years as we plan and talk about costs and talk about projections. But you can see, we're projected to go up almost 450 students over the next five years, which is, which is pretty significant, and most of it will occur at the elementary level. The second slide is just a snapshot that demonstrates our changing student needs over time. That's really the purpose of this slide. It demonstrates the overall enrollment decline over a 10-year and a five-year period, but shows at that same time, students that require special services or an IEP have increased. They've increased pretty significantly. So when we sit here and talk about student need, talk about identifying supports and where we need to put them in the various schools, it's a need that's really identified in data, in a shift in what we're seeing in terms of, of student population. All right, so to get to some of the main drivers, as we call them in the budget, are some of the main levers. And we talked about the fact that, you know, it's, we're a people business, so it's people and it's benefits that make up the bulk of our cost, about 80% of our cost over time. So the insurance line item is normally the second largest driver of an increase on an annual basis for us. We're a self-insured organization, which allows us to, to be flexible in how we manage the, the fund increases over time. But we have an internal service fund that funds our, our premiums and pays for our premiums that's in a very favorable standing right now. So we have healthy reserves. We put the reserve level there, and I know we're having policy conversations, right, Amy, about, you know, formulating what the right amount of dollars are to keep in this fund, but this fund can be used on an annual basis to shore up deficits or kind of smooth out what we do in terms of insurance increases. The very good news this year is that the fund is in such favorable shape that we can wash out the actual insurance increase. So we're pleased to be able to sit here tonight and say what's normally the second largest driver behind personnel on an annual basis will be a 0% increase this year. And we talked about that quite a bit at the workshop. So the next, the next two slides really encapsulate and kind of highlight the positions and the need that we have in the district, right? We talked about really having a focus on creating a new mod, two new models, actually. One was having a social worker that, at each one of our elementary schools and creating that model. We have split staff right now. We have increased need of students, increased need to connect with our families and support them in different ways. So as we've talked about, starting with our, when Katie Crisula presented, we are advocating for two social workers, which will allow us to have one at each one of our elementary schools. As Neil said, one of the hires we've already completed now on grant funding, and we would assume to carry that, that position over to next year. The leadership structure. We're looking to do something a little bit different at the elementary level in terms of special education leadership. A question came up in an earlier presentation about, are we adding administrators? This actually, I just want to be clear, isn't adding administrators to our administrative union, these are not formerly administrative positions. This models the framework we have in place at Henry James and at the high school, which is a teacher contract position with a stipend, and it's a leadership opportunity for teachers to facilitate planning and placement team meetings. Really, the purpose of this is to help to free up the school psychologists at the elementary level by taking on some of the administrative responsibilities that are currently conducted by them. It will require three positions across the five elementary schools, but we have two other positions in the district that we're going to reallocate, so it's really an addition of one FTE to the bottom line. And something I know, you know, Sue and I were at one of the elementary schools today, and I was just, as I was preparing for the presentation, I was asking the elementary principal, bring to life for me how you believe this will work in your building. What will it do in terms of enabling you to free up some really key resources? And the principals are really excited about this because, again, it's going to allow that school psychologist to free up more to work with students directly, go into classes, work with teachers, contact parents a little more freely, and not be in the business of conducting the meetings all the time. So we're excited about that. The, the last two on this slide are related to caseloads, straight caseload and increase in responsibilities. A special education teacher that will be split 0.5 at Squadron Line, 0.5 at Latimer to, to really regulate. And I know we looked at caseload numbers over the weekend and responded to some questions there, but that's, I compare that a little bit almost to how we look at class size at the elementary level. You, you get a certain size, a certain magnitude, it becomes too hard to really be as effective as you'd like to be. Sue, if you pop to the next one? Thanks. The last two positions, capstone support. We discussed the fact that this capstone experience is going to be a requirement for every student at the high school and the different pathways it'll take to get there. We are still figuring out the exact numbers that will be in each one of these pathways, but are advocating for a, a full-time position to help support what will be obviously a cap, you know, a full class of students, you know, over 300 students that, that need to work through and get this experience. The school psychologist, again, and we've seen an increase in evaluations, we provided that data to the board, testing at both the high school and Henry James have increased, and we're going to require that support in terms to meet deadlines, to, to meet mandates, and really be as effective as we can be to meet our responsibilities. So the one piece on the bottom, I want to make clear, and we'll, we'll get into a little more specifics, all of the new positions that we are advocating for, we're working in collaboration with the town, and then we have availability of our own grant funding, and we can cover in a thoughtful way all seven FTE without adding to the fixed cost of the district. And I think that's something that's very important for us to consider. So these are kind of the puts it all, this is a format that we've worked with throughout the budget process, and this is strictly related to personnel. So the top part of this sheet is all the additions to the, to the bottom line when we look at last year's budget number being the base that we build from. The top nine lines are different contractual obligations, and those add up to an increase of 3.76 in and of themselves. Some of that increase on the teachers line item is a little larger than we've seen in the past. That's a result of last year's boom in enrollment, particularly at the kindergarten level. We had to add three teachers that were unbudgeted for. They're now in, in the roles, and we need to roll them in, and as we said in the Budget Workshop, kind of true that up so that we make sure we have the appropriate funds in the, in the right places. You'll see the impact of the new positions, just to show you what the dollar figure is, significant dollar figure of $545,000. The impact of the substitutes is interesting. There's a huge challenge with substitute, a shortage of substitutes. We've talked to, to the board about that. We need to compete more effectively with what a reasonable wage is in order to draw people into positions that have been challenging to do right now but are really important for us to keep going with our daily operations. So all said and done, the adds are almost 5%, 4.73. The bottom part of this sheet serves to show you the reductions of how we come off that line item. So the health insurance, certainly helpful that it's flat. We saw significant savings over last year in the pension and OPEB. And Amy, correct me, that's, that's the one-time mortality?
Yep.
Tables, right? So we, we made some significant increase in cost there last year, and it paid dividends and savings this year. We always project a certain number of retirements. That number may go up as the year goes on, but we lock that in, so that's $150,000 of savings. The way we denote that is you take a high-level teacher on the contract, retires, and we estimate a mid-level hire, and you get $25,000 in savings on each one of those teachers. That's where that figure comes from. And then we denote the grant funding, so we take the cost of those new positions right back out, but just wanted to show you line item by line item how we got there. And then Amy has a plan for utilizing the remaining grant funding of a little over $300,000 to offset other areas of the operating budget. So total reductions are almost 1.2 million, and you come from a personnel standpoint of a little bit below three, and that's just personnel. And then we start looking at other cost increases from there.
It was working a second ago. All right, we're just going to go the old-fashioned one here.
All right.
Do the battery on it. Our battery's running low.
There you go.
Talk fast.
I can do that. All right, so there's other areas of the budget that are going to require increases this year. We've kind of put them on this slide, and I'm going to hit on a couple of the highlights because I know we've had quite a bit of conversation about several of them. The first, the increase in textbooks and instructional supplies. Really what that is, is kind of truing up a practice that's been in place for a while. We have consumables in elementary math for our math curriculum, and what we had done in the past is kind of buy out of savings in the previous year and never really budget for them in the out year. And as we went through COVID and managed our budget and, and working with Amy on planning on this, she wants to true that number up, have it be a more accurate number for what textbooks and instructional supplies in its entirety represent, and it's an increase of about $48,000, which you really can tie pretty directly to those consumable workbooks at the, at the elementary level. The second piece I was going to draw attention to is, is the big number, is the increase in, in transportation. So that represents our contract with Salter's. It's a 3% increase on the overall contract, which is reasonable. The overall contract is, is close to $3 million. But there are also some challenges due to the bus driver shortages and the fact that we have to contract out much more for athletics, sometimes special different runs that Salter's just isn't able to cover due to the reality of shortages in drivers. And the industry doesn't project that that's going to shift anytime soon. It's a little bit like the substitute shortage. They feel that those challenges will be there for the next couple of years. The utilities piece, no surprise, we see that going on in our own homes, right? So it's, it's, it's an increase of 7% over last year from a line item standpoint. But these bits and pieces and these other line items added up are over $300,000, and it's a half a percent increase on their overall budget. So these aren't items that we were able to keep flat, and we felt important to articulate them and, and put them out front. So the grant funding, and we talked about this again prior, so we've had some early conversations, and this will require more conversation as we move forward with the Board of Selectmen and, and Maria as the, as the town manager. But Maria has put forward a plan where she would advocate for supporting, funding our social workers, two full-time social workers using the ARPA funding for the town. The town has received, Amy writes, $7.5 million.
Yep.
All these different grants do have restrictions on them, but this is a use that would really fit nicely. I believe the Board of Selectmen are going to advocate for social work support on the town side as well. And right now, Maria is advocating for funding these positions, each actually for four years. That may change, but that's the initial conversation, and that would certainly be a wonderful outcome for us. The Department Supervisor Special Education position, we have our own federal funding that's, that's available to us that we would utilize for that position, as well as the special education position. The speech and language pathologist, we believe we can cover that position by looking at our contracted services. Little less contracted services spent on school psychologist support because we're bringing that into the fold, and a little more of it spent on contracted services from the operating cost. Leaves the capstone coordinator position, and our proposal would be to fund that year one out of our non-lapsing account. Amy's presented a plan, I know, to the Board of Education, and I'm sure we will do this later on in our presentation to the Board of Finance. The question when utilizing grants always is, hey, this is a lot of grant money. You're going to leave a cliff for yourself. What are you going to do when the grant money runs dry? We have $650,000 in non-lapsing, in the non-lapsing fund. It's a perfect use over time to add some dollars to the operating cost to minimize the cliff and fund the balance of the cliff over a three-year period. So Amy's presented that. I feel pretty comfortable with that. It was very interesting today with the Speaker of the House, Ritter, was talking about new legislation at the state level and the mental health bills that are going to be coming forward. He believes that there are going to be significant dollars for districts to support initiatives that we have here. So we may have even more options coming our way for funding some of these important supports, at least in the short term, because I think the other thing we need to do is recognize the fact that we're putting these resources in as a result of the needs we see right now and the urgency we have right now, and we evaluate them over time like we do any programs that we have. Four years from now, three years from now, are we still in the same situation or not? Can we pull back? Can we allocate the dollars a different way? But I think those are all conversations that are going to be very important for board members in the next couple of years. So the writing gets smaller, but here's the big wrap. All-in, and these are the items, so it's the personnel up top that I had shared with you already, and then it's the additional items that we had just talked about that were a little over $350,000. Brings you 5.23% over last year's spending. And then when you take out the reductions that we talked about and the grant utilization, you end up at the 3.47% increase overall. Lot of conversation I've had with local superintendents, certainly. We, we talk about, are you seeing some of the struggles, same struggles with increased costs? People are. I feel that our budget increase is very reasonable when I look at what's, what's going on in other communities, and we'll pull some of that data together as we prepare for our next conversations with the board and with the, with the Board of Finance, because I think those comparables are always interesting to, interesting to look at. You know, there are very large variables in grant funding opportunities for districts. It's wonderful that the town received over $7 million in grant funding. The school district only received 900. Other districts received several million dollars, right? So I'm really encouraged by the open dialogue with the town and the willingness to at least engage in potentially collaborating on some of these resources. I think it's, we're really fortunate, and I think it's very important. So I'm just going to end with, you know, we clarify our vision for continuous improvement in this district on an annual basis, and I believe it's a, it's a budget that supports our vision and our core beliefs, as well as those themes that I talked about up front. And it supports high academic achievement. We're not cutting other programs to put in new resources that we believe we need this year. So I think it's a budget that meets the needs of all, certainly promoting that social and emotional well-being for our students. And it's always, as members of the board and the community know, it's a balance between how we continue to improve and provide great programs and being fiscally responsible. So that is the wrap.
There you go. Does anybody have any questions from Adam?
Yeah, I do. Going back to the enrollment, maybe no, 2022-23 enrollment projections.
Yep, Slide 10.
Is that it, Slide 10? Yes, it is. So you had mentioned here at the bottom, five-year projections indicate an increase of 445 students over projections indicate an increase of 445 students over the five years. How does that affect, you know, possible redistricting? I mean, with 445 kids, is that starting in next year? Is it starting thereafter? I mean, where do you see that starting and a slow build?
Well, the elementary, if you look at the elementary enrollment increase there, it's a 90-student increase.
Right.
For this year. So it starts immediately, you know, and the majority of that increase will be at the elementary level. So it's the annual exercise that Neil engages us in every year of looking at the enrollment projections. How does that play out with capacity? And what does it look like in terms of programming? So there may be some need to move programs down the road. We're looking at that right now. I think we're going to be okay for next year. But I think it's going to lead to a future conversation again about squadron line as a facility, squadron line capacity, and squadron line is a priority for what you want to do with that building in terms of long-term planning.
Right. The reason why I ask is because of the, Neil, you've spoken about the apartment condo complexes and houses that we're building up in the northern town. And so that would bring in a number, yeah, I'm presuming many of these students within the 400, the 445 realm of students that are coming, in particular to squadron, correct?
Yeah.
Right. Because we know we have enrollment pressures at squadron as it exists.
Yeah.
Correct.
So certainly something we've talked about, keeping an eye on and making sure that we're taking care of that and making sure we have space there.
Yep.
Anybody else have questions? I just wanted, personally, anybody else, or is it just me? I just wanted to, Sharon pointed out that in here on our major drivers, we have seven employees, but from the workshop, this listed five. Is that?
This was just five because it was a comparative of staffing history?
I gotcha.
It's not a budget request sheet.
Gotcha. Okay, perfect.
We're, we're...
Surely he'd step off over here.
You're making sure everything agrees. I am very happy to hear that, you know, in the workings with the town, and they've been great about being open to sharing their ARPA funds with us. And clearly, after everything we heard tonight, the social, emotional supports, as we've known, are a big need, and I'm glad we have been able to find a way to fund them.
The other piece of information to share tonight, we talked a little bit at the workshop because it was new information, the grant list, growth for the town came in extremely favorable.
Right.
And that will be a lever that the Board of Finance can talk about that's under their purview. When they put all the pieces together and they determine the mill rate, but I think they'll have the ability to really work with this whole thing extremely effectively and, not speaking for them, but minimizing tax impact to residents this year.
Yeah. I think it's, I thank you for a very well-thought-out budget and for all the questions you've answered and all the detail you've all put into it. It's been really helpful for me this year, seeing everything. We've got a lot of work ahead.
Yeah.
But this has been a great budget process. So thank you all for all your hard work.
Absolutely.
Very much appreciated.
So we come back at the next meeting. You'll have an opportunity to ask any questions again and vote on this budget, and then it gets moved forward to the Board of Finance, and we present to them. I don't have the date on the tip of my tongue, but...
Second Tuesday in March.
Second Tuesday in March, we will do the...
I just looked at it. It's March 8.
Do the presentation to the Board of Finance.
I think, you know, I've been on this board a long time, and we have not seen a budget with a three in front of it since 2008. So kudos to everybody for the fiscal restraint. We've done a lot with a little for a very long time.
Well, and I also want to make mention of the, like, the last year and during COVID, the fact that we aren't really underwater right now is also a real testament to all of you and what you've done, because there are a lot of districts that are really struggling with the costs of COVID, and you guys were able to be creative and figure out how to do it best to make it work for all of us and the town.
It's because Amy's very hard on me.
But I really appreciate that, because I think we're starting from a good place, and hopefully we can...
No, we are.
...get what the needs we, needs fill.
A good duo you two are.
Can I also just add to that a little bit? I mean, I don't know if this is my second or third time going through this now, but, you know, obviously, you know, a ton of work has been put into this, and we're all very appreciative. And I think if there was ever a time to, you know, really back this, you know, now is it, because everything the kids have been through, you know, over the last year or two, this is very reasonable, in my opinion. So kudos to you guys on a fantastic job.
Thank you.
I'm gonna echo that and also just repeat what Susan said. Some of the additions are, you know, with the school counselors, the social workers, the psychologists, really focus on a lot of what we heard today. So I think, you know, we're pointing in the right direction at the right time also.
Agreed. All right. Anybody else? Okay, with that...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. And you said non-public schools is all incorporated in those numbers, correct?
Yes, correct.
Because we used to do that separately, but now it's all embedded.
Yeah, right.
Good, got it. All right, quarterly budget report.
All right, back to current year. Feel like I'm traveling back in time. So here's your quarterly budget status report as of the end of the second quarter, so as of the end of December 31st. I'll just, as I normally do, just touch on some of the highlights, starting with the revenues. There's some additional revenues that we got our awards in during the month of January, so I'll run through those highlights quick. So the Special Education placements and excess cost grant, we received our preliminary award of about $1.8 million. There was a slight decrease of about $46,000. That's not really unusual with our excess cost. It depends on the students that are retaining services, if the services qualify, if we meet the calculation standard. So actually, that's not really a great decrease for this type of grant. The adult education, we received a preliminary award of $15,365, a very small increase of about $791. The adult ed grant is typically around $15,000 from year to year, so no major changes there. The private school health services, we received our final award of $20,940. This is an increase of about $2,200. Moving down to our federal grant awards, Title II Part A, we had a final award that we received for $56,603, and then again, a small decrease of about almost $7,000 compared to the prior year. Title III, right below that, we received our final award of about $9,400, and then a slight increase of about $1,000 from prior year. And then I believe the last, second to last one I wanted to mention is the Title IV Part A. We received our final award of $10,000, and this has just remained unchanged from the prior year. Moving on to the next page, the last one I wanted to mention is our ARPA IDEA money. During the first quarter report, we had reported out that we anticipated receiving $223,887. But as you can see, our final award came in higher than that, $245,128. So some good news there. Moving down to our expenditures, kind of more of the same from the first quarter. The major changes in spending from period over period is mainly related to COVID. At the beginning of last year, during the first couple of quarters, we were setting up for in-person hybrid learning, additional cleaning supplies, desks, tents, technology, everything that we needed to make it work. So I'll take you through some of the specifics and the highlights on the expenditures. So starting with general control, we had a decrease mainly from the timing of vendor payments, but in particular related to the COVID. We had some COVID expenditures in the prior year that were now recurring in the current year related to the advertising for filling positions in order to get additional staff to accommodate a different learning model, as well as the in-person, we had the hybrid. And then in addition, we had some audit and legal expenditures that were higher at this time compared to last year compared to the current year. Health services, probably no surprise here, an increase in spending rate due to the overtime and needs for our nursing substitutes, again, due to the impact of COVID and having to contact tracing. Transportation, we saw a decrease in expenditures at the same time this year due to our regular transportation contract. So last year during the summer, we helped out our Salters, our transportation contractor during the summer months to get through the summer months with the COVID. So we fronted him some money during the summer month last year, which did not happen this year. Student body activities, as you can imagine, we didn't have much student body activities last year at the start of the pandemic when we were not in person full-time. So we had some athletic trainer services this year. That did not happen last year. And then the community services, the same theme here, our custodial staff, they take care of our buildings when we have nonprofit organizations, student clubs, any other extracurriculars that utilize our buildings. And again, this wasn't happening last year. And again, we are starting to get back into the realm of normality this year with our in-person learning and the utilization of those buildings. And I think that's all I have for highlights. If anybody has any questions?
Anyone have questions, Ray? All right. Thank you, Amy. Policies, second reading.
Yeah, just as a reminder, this is a carryover from some work the Policy Committee did last year in reviewing the 1,000 series. Both are existing policies as coming through for a review and adding a few policies that we based on some of the work that the CAVE policies were present in those policies, and that we sort of simsbearized to them and made them our own. So this is the 1,000 series about community relations, community use of our facilities. It is being presented in the entirety of the series. And if we stay on track, this should be able, this is the second reading, and it should be able to be up for a vote two weeks from tonight, 10th of February 22nd.
Okay. So any questions, please contact Neil. And with that, we have a second public audience.
I'm Lauren Boyko, 15th floor of the Senate.
I am exhausted, and I'm sure all of you are too. And this afternoon, I sort of had an aha about why I felt so wrung out. And it's no secret to everybody that we're in a season in history with a really large number of emotionally charged, hot-button issues that are converging in society all at the same time. But what really hit me today that's relevant to this meeting, and I don't even know to what extent you have control or that it's handled by the Board or individual teachers, but I realized today that every day that my high schooler comes home, he's talking about another social justice issue that's been discussed at length in not one, but like all of his classes. And it might not always be the same one, but there's never a break of just learning. So in every class, he's talking about topics like global warming and climate change and racism and gender and sexuality issues and abortion and addiction and mental health and gun violence and rights and technology issues. And I will be the first one to tell you that those are all really important things for kids to talk about in a developmentally appropriate way at the right age in the right context. But it occurred to me that human physiology is not meant to always be on. We're not supposed to have our foot on the gas 24/7. There needs to be moderation and balance to not have a constant stream of cortisol cursing through our veins. It's not healthy for our body. It's not healthy for our mental health. It's in classes. It's in clubs. It's in foreign language, and it's in art. Of course, it's in English and it's in history, but when every class you have has this topic, some hot-button topic that's emotionally charged debate, you never get to turn off. You never get that relaxation. I was struck by this art that's on the walls here by the Farmington Valley Quilting Project. I've seen it before. It was at the Avon Library. And if anybody hasn't looked at it, it's really breathtaking if you take a look. And the reason I mention it was because today, when my son came home again with another big topic in art class, my brain said, can't art just be art? When can we just, you know, like, draw an apple or a river or something relaxing? And I'm not unaware that art has a place to have social justice in it or to discuss a topic. But when we're talking about the social and emotional condition of our kids and we're looking at how to support them after the fact when they're struggling, it also dawned on me that maybe we ought to be looking at the content of the curriculum across the curriculum, just like we try and balance or talk about not having every test on a Tuesday for every class. Maybe we don't need to have so many emotionally charged topics in all of the different classes all of the time. I don't know whether this is a micro-teacher level, whether it's a Board of Ed, whether it's an administrator talking to the school administrators issue, but I'm finding it is more and more of a thing with the kids, where every teacher is trying to impart some social justice lesson every day. And I think that's a lot. It's a lot for me. I'm like trying to breathe through it all. I can only imagine what it's like for younger children and high schoolers who are trying to learn to moderate their way through all of their emotions and issues that they already have to navigate, and then to have all of these other societal topics heaped on them to find their way through. So I don't know what we do about it, but I just wanted to mention it. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wants to say anything? All right. So we need to move into executive session. Our next Board of Ed meeting is Wednesday, the 23rd. It is slated to be at Central School. That location may change depending on things that are going on. So just everybody watch your emails for that. But with that said, do we need a motion to go into executive session? Can I get a motion for executive session?
A motion that we go into executive session.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
I agree.
Okay.